Production and broadcast costs for Sedgwick County Commission meetings have been underwritten by Sedgwick County. KPTS welcomes comments from the public on its broadcast of the county commission hearings. Viewers are invited to write to County Commission Broadcast, KPTS 320 West 21st Street, Wichita, Kansas 67203.
Good morning, I'm Kristy Zukovich. Welcome to the January 14th Sedgwick County Commission meeting. We are glad you're joining us today. Of course, we use this time before our meeting officially begins to let you know about things going on around Sedgwick County. And first off, to let you know, coming up at the InTrust Bank Arena, we do have Cirque du Soleil that will be there the 14th through the 18th. We have Monster Jam, 23rd through the 24th. We have Thunder Hockey on the 30th, and Harlem Globetrotters on the 31st. There's also a full event schedule you can find on our website at sedgwickcounty.org. Also to let you know, at Exploration Place, they have Small Grass Film Festival. It is affiliated with Tall Grass Film Festival, but it is Small Grass Film Festival, that will be the 17th. We also have a new traveling exhibit, Wildlife Rescue, that will be there on the 24th. And a place for you to get your inventor on, it's the Creator Space, so hope that you will head out to Exploration Place. Commissioners, we have a special guest this morning. We're going to invite our Sedgwick County Treasurer, Lynda Kazire, to come up and give us a little show and tell about tags. Lynda?
Thank you, Kristy. Good morning, Commissioners. Lynda Kazire, Sedgwick County Treasurer. I have some new plates I'd like to show off. This is our new personalized plate. If you have a personalized tag on your car, you will need to reorder and get this plate designed. Every five years, they change it, so this one will start January of this year and will run through the end of 2019. The personalized plates do allow for seven letters, or spaces, or numbers. Can't do any symbols on it, and the state does look to make sure that it's not anything that is vulgar, lewd, lascivious, so if you're going to order one, be real careful. Disabled plates are available also, but they're limited to five spaces because they do have to put the handicap placard information on this end. You can also get a motorcycle tag. So if one of you's got your Harley, you're ready to fire up for the summer, you can get a personalized motorcycle tag, and you can limit it to five letters, numbers, or spaces. The registration fee for those plates are $45.50 plus your normal taxes and registration fees. Last year, the Kansas Legislature passed an arts plate, which is a lovely plate. It supports the Arts Commission. An annual fee for this is $50, plus there is a one-time charge of $50 to the state for the production of this plate, in addition to your regular standard renewal fees and taxes that are applicable. It's a one-time charge for the $50, so next year, if you got the arts plate, you pay the $50 annual fee to us, plus your fees and your taxes, and this goes to funding various arts grant programs throughout the state. The next one will be a Chris Cronus favorite. It's the Kansas Horse Council Plate. It is an annual fee of $30, which goes to the Kansas Horse Council. There's a one-time charge on this plate for $50 that goes directly to the Kansas Department of Revenue. One time after that, the next year, you pay your $30 license plate fee, plus your applicable taxes and fees. And this is really a very pretty plate. I need to turn these around. Sorry. Arts horse. They're very pretty. We like them. And last but not least, the Legislature also passed the Kansas Freemasons Tag. It has an annual $25 license plate fee, which goes directly to the Kansas Masons. There's a one-time charge of only $40 on this plate. It's not as colorful, it's not as bright, so therefore, the state charges just the one-time $40 for this with the original purchase of it, plus your applicable fees and taxes due at registration. As you know, we have a lot of 1-2-3 SAM plates, but we also have, in addition to the personalized plates, we have eight different military license tags that are available. There is no one-time plate fee for military. They do have different requirements in order to get a military tag, and they do pay the taxes and the fees. We also have nine educational tags. We have 19 total organizational license plates. So we've got something for everyone, and now that the fees for these organizations are collected at the tag offices, it used to be, and Commissioner Unruh, you can back me up on this, you used to have to send your money to the Alumni Association at K-State, wait for the letter to come back from them, then go to get your tag. Now, Dave can come down to the office, pay his annual fee to K-State, and we take care of it all right there, then we remit the money to K-State. It's a lot more convenient. I appreciate the Legislature for passing that also, because that was a very, very good service to the citizens. And that's all I've got, just show and tell today.
Well, thank you, Lynda, and it is much more convenient for people who have those specialty tags with the new system, but I didn't realize we had that many ways that you can express your personality or...
We have everything from, let me think, we've got Children's Trust Fund, we have Ducks Unlimited, we have EMS, we have firefighter, we have I'm Pet Friendly, we have breast cancer awareness, we have Shriner tags, we have...
Shockers.
Shockers. We've got the shockers. I was just going through the other ones. Okay, for the colleges, we've got shockers, which everybody in this room probably has. We've got KU, K-State, Fringe University, Benedictine, Emporia State, Fort Hays State, Pittsburgh, and Mooresburg. So if there's any of those that anyone's interested in, we will be happy to accommodate you.
Well, thanks. We're happy that your life is not complicated, simple, and routine.
You know, if we had one plate, oh, but we like everybody to be unique and have their own different...
Lynda, thanks for that information.
Different things. Thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Kristy. Thanks, Lynda. And Lynda is unique, and we're glad she came up and gave us that little opening. Commissioners, we have a short but important agenda today. We have a proclamation for Junior League of Wichita Day. We'll have a presentation of the 2014 Chairman's Award, and then selection of our Chair Award and Chair Pro Tem. But before we get to that, we'd first like to say welcome to our 5th District Commissioner, Jim Howell. Welcome, glad you're here.
Thank you very much.
Just so you know, sometimes we use this time to have trivia or quizzes. Commissioner Ransaw really likes the quizzes. But today, we do not have a trivia or a quiz for you all, because I thought, well, it's Chairman Unruh, it's your last meeting, so I thought we should talk about what has happened in your year a little bit. And we've had 38 meetings, as you being chairman. During that time, we've talked about gift ideas for Valentine's Day, if you kind of remember that.
I did.
We've had trivia about the shockers. We sang the 12 Days of Christmas here at the county. We had some NCAA trivia. We talked about your Thanksgiving menus, and we talked about what you were going to do for Father's Day, and I think we've even talked about your favorite Halloween candy. So we try to cover it all here at the Commission meeting, so people get to know you. But in your year, we've also had 51 proclamations, we've had nine retirements, and we only had one drop clock.
Oh, thank you.
But I think you should probably get this meeting underway.
I think in self-defense, I'd like to get this meeting underway. But we want to welcome everyone who is in our boardroom today, appreciate your attention to county business, and welcome those who are watching by way of television. At this point, I will call to order the regular meeting of the Board of County Commissioners, January 14th, 2015. Madam Clerk, first item.
Invocation to be led by Pastor Herman Hicks, Greater Pentecostal Church of God in Christ. Please remain standing for the flag salute.
Our Father, you said in your word, "In all thy ways acknowledge you, and you would direct our path." So we pray that you will direct the path of this county commissioner meeting today. We pray that you will bless the commissioners, and lead them, and guide them in their decisions. We know that they will make decisions that will affect the individuals in this community and in this county. So lead them to be sensitive to the needs of those in this county, and give them wisdom in everything that they do, and let them realize that they are servants of the people, and will give you the glory and the praise. In Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor Hicks, thank you for being here today. Next item, please.
Roll call. Commissioner Peter John.
Present.
Commissioner Ransaw.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Norton.
Present.
Chairman Unruh.
Present.
Next item.
Proclamations, Item A, proclamation declaring Junior League of Wichita Day.
Commissioners, I have a proclamation for your consideration. Whereas Junior League of Wichita is an organization of women committed to promoting volunteerism, developing the potential of women, and improving communities; and whereas Junior League of Wichita reaches out to women of all races, religious, and national origins who demonstrate an interest in and a commitment to volunteerism; and whereas currently Junior League of Wichita works with the community to combat child abuse through awareness, prevention, and intervention; and whereas the nearly 800 members of Junior League of Wichita give generously of their time and talents to volunteer in many areas of this community; and whereas Junior League of Wichita was founded on January 15th, 1925, and has devotedly served Wichita continuously for the past 90 years, now therefore, be it resolved that I, David M. Unruh, Chairman of the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners, do hereby proclaim January 15th, 2015, as Junior League of Wichita Day, and ask all Sedgwick County residents to join me in celebrating Junior League of Wichita's many contributions to our community. Commissioners, you've heard the proclamation. What's the will of the Board?
Mr. Chairman, I move we adopt the proclamation.
Second. Thank you. Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Commissioner Peter John.
Aye.
Commissioner Ransaw.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Norton.
Aye.
Chairman Unruh.
Aye.
And receiving the proclamation this morning is Patty Armstrong.
Yes, on the Board of Junior League. Thank you very much. We really appreciate this. We're looking forward to our next 90 years, after tomorrow.
Okay. Well, thank you. Thank you for being here. We're pleased to make this proclamation. I think most all the citizens in our community and area are aware of the activities of the Junior League, and appreciate your commitment to improving our communities. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have another comment here from Commissioner Norton.
Well, I honor the Junior League for all that they've done for the 90 years they've been, and one of the oldest junior leagues in America, actually. You know, I see the Zoo Board members here, and they've had such an impact on the zoo. I'm very involved with the Child Advocacy Center, and you've just made a significant gift to the Capitol Campaign. But I think if people researched the Junior League of Wichita, they'd find that your fingers have been in so many of the movements, and projects, and programs, and infrastructure in our community over the years, that you've fostered, promoted, and then passed on to the Board or whatever throughout the community. It's a long, long list over that many years. So thanks for being here today, and I'm proud to support the proclamation.
Thank you.
Very much appreciated. Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you very much. Next item, please.
New Business, Item B, presentation of the 2014 Chairman's Award.
Commissioners and ladies and gentlemen, each year since 1988, the Chairman of the Board of County Commissioners has the privilege and the opportunities to select one organization, or one project, or one individual that has exhibited a particularly high level of dedication to public service, or has otherwise made strides to improve our community. I'm thrilled today to be able to present the 2014 Chairman's Award to a group that makes our community a better place to live and visit every single day of the year. So Commissioners and friends, it's my distinct honor and privilege to present the Chairman's Award to the Sedgwick County Zoological Society, and as a footnote, in honor of Sinda. So I would like to present that now, if Chairman would stand up here. This is, we hand this to you, but this is in honor of every member of the Zoological Society and the great work they've done, and so we're pleased to present this award to you. I'll ask you to say a few words here in just a moment, and perhaps have the board members that are here stand up to be recognized, but I've got a few more things to say, so hang on here just a minute. There may be some folks who are either watching, or maybe even here, who don't know how our Sedgwick County Zoo came about. But in 1965, the Junior League of Wichita was looking for a new project, and they decided that we needed a new, bigger, and better zoo. So they brought that idea to the Board of County Commissioners, who were generally in favor of it, but they wanted to have a broader community affirmation that this was the right thing to do. So a group of dedicated citizens took up a grassroots campaign to be sure that we would have a larger zoo for our children and for our grandchildren. They worked very hard, they were dedicated, a lot of energy, a lot of effort, and of course, there was that famous slogan they used, "Boo-hoo, we need a new zoo." And that's what started it all back in those days. But the community responded favorably, and the County Commissioners then approved putting on the ballot a proposed bond issue of $3.65 million to build a new zoo and the Sedgwick County Park. The Sedgwick County Zoo opened August 25th, 1971, and today, it has grown into one of the largest zoos in the United States, and the greatest outdoor attraction, probably, the largest outdoor attraction in the state of Kansas. The Zoo Board has done a great job in working with our public-private partnerships in developing the zoo. We have over 2,500 animals and 400 different species, but the public-private partnership has helped bring that about in very identifiable ways. They've worked with the private sector in building the Coke orangutan and chimpanzee habitat, the Downing Gorilla Forest, the Slosson Tiger Trek, the Junior League Pride of the Plains, the Cessna Penguin Cove, the Cargill Learning Center, and the Oliver Veterinary Clinic. And then this last year, we're very happy to be part of a new future exhibit, which is the Elephants of the Zambezi River Valley. And I'm proud that Sedgwick County could be part of this fabulous exhibit by our participation in the Elephant Barn. We can't have a world-class zoo, I think, without elephants. And it's really exciting that one of our original girls of our two elephants is going to have a new home in the new Elephant Barn and at this new exhibit. And we're very saddened that Sinda will not be there, but they have proven to be a very, very popular exhibit to all of our citizens. One of the reasons is because of creative ability of these big beasts. Here is some of the artwork that was done, and I think this was done by Sinda in the year 2000, so you get an idea of the different ways that these elephants and all the zoo bring enjoyment and pleasure to the citizens of our community. But these fantastic exhibits and the ability to showcase such a wide variety of animals doesn't just occur on its own. We've got a strong public-private partnership, and it takes leadership, commitment, and significant support, not only from the public sector, but also from the private sector, to make this happen. Our Zoo Board members, the Zoological Society, has shown imagination and dedication, given of their time and talent. They've been committed to making this zoo one of the best zoos in our country. And so they are truly invested individually as they try to make us the best and move us forward. So Commissioners, again, it's been my privilege to work with these individuals. I'm in awe of their ability to raise donations at Zuba League, and through other efforts in our community, and they have always exhibited a can-do attitude, and they get it done. So I want to thank each one of the Zoo Board members who are here today, and those who've gone before them, as they have helped nurture this special organization over these years. But thanks to you all. (applause) Scott, you want to say something?
Sure. Again, thanks for the great support of the Commission, particularly over these last few years, to help the zoo evolve, get better, get bigger, reinvent themselves. I think the key to this wonderful Board, which we've got a nice representation today, is we've got a very diverse Board. We are represented by law firms, accounting firms, private entrepreneurs, public company CFOs, great fundraisers with us, are also key members of our staff. You know, our philosophy has always had a diverse Board that can bring energy, talent, across the spectrum, and I think more importantly, hire great staff, which is here in attendance today, set policy, set financial guideposts, and then get the heck out of the way and let them do their jobs. So it's been an honor to serve on this Board, and we appreciate all your support, and look forward to another 40 years of a great partnership. Thanks again, Commissioners.
Well, as the Chairman makes his way back, I'll take my opportunity to thank the Zoo Society Board members, because they do arduous work with a big budget and some controversial issues over the years, and they handle it with grace and fortitude to move forward. You know, the zoo has become an icon in our community, and to think that we would diminish or not support the zoo, you know, falls on deaf ears for me. I think it's very, very important that we continue to support and move forward, and we thank you for your hard work. We really appreciate you being here today, and for all the work you do behind the scenes that people just don't know about. Thank you.
Okay, thank you all for being here.
Mr. Chairman, before we move forward to the consent agenda, I would like to have just a moment, if you would let me.
Okay, I mean, certainly.
You're going to need to stand up for this, though. We know the next agenda item will like the new chair, and so this will be your last item, last time to bang the gavel today, and we'd like to honor you for your year, which you've led us through some arduous times and financial difficulties, and you've come out on the other end in great shape. So we honor you today in recognition of your chairmanship this year. Thank you.
(applause) Well, thank you very much, and Commissioners, thanks for allowing Commissioner Norton to make that presentation. I've enjoyed this last year of being Chair. I fully realize that the Chairman's vote's just one vote among five, but I have enjoyed the opportunity to moderate these meetings, and appreciated the collegiality and that atmosphere in which we work. So thanks to all you gentlemen for your help and support, for making our Commission move forward this year. So thank you. I guess we're ready for the next item, Madam Clerk.
Consent agenda.
Commissioners, you have the consent agenda before you, and I'd recommend you approve it.
So move. Second. Is there any discussion? Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Commissioner Peter John.
Aye.
Commissioner Ransaw.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Norton.
Aye.
Chairman Unruh.
Aye.
And next item.
New Business, Item E, selection of one member of the Board of County Commissioners to serve as Chairman through January 13, 2016.
Okay, Commissioners, we will take nominations for Chair. I would say I don't think our rules call for a second, so we can have nominations without seconds, and I think the easiest way to handle this, if there's more than one nominee for Chair, is that after the nomination ceases, we will just have the Clerk call the roll, and we will say the name of the person that we want to support, and kind of eliminates the need to vote no on any one. So that way, we can just cast a positive vote, so that's the way we'll handle it. And so the floor is open for nominations. Commissioner Peter John.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to make a motion to nominate Commissioner Ransaw as the next Chairman for 2015.
Thank you.
And I'll have a few more comments at appropriate time.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Norton.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to nominate Dave Unruh for Chairman.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations? All right, we'll have the nomination cease, and Commissioner Peter John, do you want to make a comment now?
Yes, I'm sorry, I'm a little slow in my light there. You know, this would be the, by my calculations, this would be the first time in quite a while that we've got a Commissioner who's entering his second term, who has not either had the privilege of being the Chair Pro Tem or the Chairman. Commissioner Ransaw, I've had the privilege of working with him since 2011, and he's been extremely diligent and hardworking, and I frankly think he would be an outstanding Chairman for this Commission, and I'm absolutely delighted to place his name in nomination this morning.
Thank you, Commissioner. Is there any other comment? And Madam Clerk, I'll ask you to call the roll, or call the vote, and we'll just say the name of the person we support.
Commissioner Peter John.
Commissioner Ransaw.
Commissioner Ransaw.
Well, it's a toss-up, but I think I'll go with Commissioner Ransaw, too.
Commissioner Howell.
Commissioner Ransaw.
Commissioner Norton.
Commissioner Unruh.
Chairman Unruh.
Commissioner Ransaw. I think it's easy to do the math, so congratulations, Commissioner Ransaw. I think now might be an appropriate time for me to hand you the gavel. I will continue to close this meeting, but congratulations, and I didn't have to bang it very often. I hope you don't...
All right. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, next item.
Item F, selection of one member of the Board of County Commissioners to serve as Chair Pro Tem through January 13, 2016.
All right, and Commissioners, I won't repeat what I said before, but I think we should follow that same procedure. So we're open for nominations. Commissioner Ransaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to nominate Commissioner Peter John for Chairman Pro Tem. I think I've done this on several occasions before, and he's been ahead for a while and hasn't been able to win, just like I haven't been able to, but hopefully today, it'll be a little different, so that's my nomination.
Thank you. Commissioner Norton.
Mr. Chairman, I nominate Dave Unruh.
Thank you, Commissioner. Are there any other nominations? All right, the nominations will cease, and we'll ask the Clerk to call the vote.
Commissioner Peter John.
It's a close call, but I'm going to go with Commissioner Peter John. It's a close call, but I'm going to go with Commissioner Peter John.
Commissioner Ransaw.
Commissioner Peter John.
Commissioner Howell.
Commissioner Peter John.
Commissioner Norton.
Commissioner Unruh.
Chairman Unruh.
Commissioner Peter John. And I think that's also not hard to do the math. Congratulations, Commissioner Peter John.[1768.62][1768.62](applause) I think that brings us to the end of our agenda, doesn't it, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
So, Commissioners, as we typically do, are there any other comments you'd like to make at this time? Other than that, I think we go to a party here pretty quick. So, there's no other business, Commissioners, Mr. Manager, we will be adjourned.